No proof of being a safe and compliant bus company. No proof of DOT status. No proof of operating as a Florida business. No proof of tax ID, no history of the company or its owners. No proof of driver requirements, they haven't been violated by Homeland Security. No pictures or badges. Criminal background check, driver's drug alcohol testing program in place. Driver road testing procedures, on-road safety check procedures. Driver's physical policy. Driver classroom training. State of Florida motor vehicle and policy of checking annually. No information on driver's experience, type of years. No information on total number of drivers. No new information on each bus company. New hire training. Operation and road testing. Passenger safety training. Online safety courses. Safety education brochures and manuals. In-service driver training. No information was required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Leslie Bowers?
Good evening, Board members. I'm here to address the current charter bus bid. There's a lot of safety concerns that it brings up about the children. It would be best to reopen the bid to address these safety concerns. The current bid does not go through driver responsibility during emergency procedures. Evacuation of the vehicle of the emergency situations. Bus companies' responsibility during emergency situations. It does not go on about any of the maintenance requirements for the charter buses. You know, DOT inspection logs. None of that is brought up in the current bid. And if we can reopen it so that all this stuff can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Moore?
Hello, I'm Paul Moore. I'm a county resident, taxpayer, and a former employee of the Transportation Department here at the school board, and now an employee of a small charter bus company here in the county. In the same subject as this before, a little over a week ago, we had the rowing event at Benderson Park, which is not a school activity in any way or whatever. The school buses from our county were being used to transport out-of-state passengers and athletes to and from the event, basically taking business away from the charter companies. And I'm wondering why. I will say that you brought up the subject about the handicapped and whatnot. The only reason we had one bus there was so that they could be ADA compliant. And I don't understand why, if they're doing the business there, why they weren't ADA compliant. Is there any way that you all can answer whether the -- why you're doing outside business from the transportation of students?
I can't answer that. Dr. Bowden, do you want to answer it or not?
There are a number of times in which our assistance is requested. We had a number of buses on-site for both the national rowing event and the junior national world events, excuse me. And we do that at the request of the nonprofit that operates the facility.
Thank you.
Do we do that for free or do we charge?
No, they reimburse us for our driver time and mileage.
Now, if they reimburse you for your driver's time and mileage, since we're a company here, we have to pay fuel tax, insurance, at $10,000 million worth of insurance at least. Are you paying fuel tax, outside insurance, other than being self-insured? Do you bear the cost that we do to be able to compete with you?
As opposed to going back and forth with you now, I'll be happy to meet with you at the conclusion of the meeting. If there are questions I can't answer for you, I'll get you answers.
Basically, with taking the business from the local companies, I don't know if you don't take that work, if you're going to lose employees or have to sell buses or anything like that. Our companies may possibly have to lay off employees, sell assets, possibly go out of business. And if you're going to be going into business against local companies, are you going to start going into air conditioning, plumbing? Are the cafeterias going to start doing catering and so forth?
Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, this is not really a question-and-answer time, but as Dr. Bowden said, he will meet with you later after the meeting.
I believe it needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Bob Woods?
All right, first of all, let me start out by saying I'm not a resident of this county. I actually live up in Pinalos County. I'm 35-year transportation individual. I've run companies in North Carolina. This is about the school board bid. This is about honor and integrity. People voted you into these positions for honor and integrity. Well, you're supposed to be doing this job to protect the people who are not present at that time. But the company that I'm with put in a cancellation policy that somebody got a little twisted about. And you're blackballing the company. But yet you go and you use your county school buses to take the food off of our table. That feel good to you? It's not good to us, okay? We have $5 million worth of insurance. You got $300,000. So if one of those international kids would have gotten hurt, your taxpayers would have been fighting the bill for this. Okay, we are running an FMCSA regulatory company. I've run companies in North Carolina, Texas. I've been doing this for a very long time. And every, I'd say 80% to 90% of the school boards run a pre-hearing to find out what the vendors' concerns are. The last time you guys did it, this phone didn't exist. You guys were still carrying pagers, okay? Where's your honor and integrity there of doing the right thing? Instead, somebody tries to put in a cancellation policy, and you blackball them. You blackballed a couple of companies for that. You're not going to give them the bid. Well, that's all fine and good, but you're going to give your tax dollars to a company in Orlando instead of giving it to the companies here who are voting your positions. Think about that for a minute. Because you know what? They're voting your positions. You keep doing this, and you keep giving it to the outside companies who have to drive two and a half hours to get here. Now the driver's already been driving two and a half hours. Now they're going to turn around and drive another three hours. Then they're going to drive back another three. How tired is that driver by that time? Being in his business for 35 years? I'm telling you right now, that driver's tired. Okay, he might not look like it. He might be, he or she might be on top of their game, but they're tired. But you know what? The taxpayers here, if you continue to do this, I would suggest that the taxpayers here in Sarasota County to get every one of you off this board. Because you know what? What you're doing is wrong. What you're doing is very wrong. And you should reopen this bid to play on a fair ground, okay? You know, you're looking at age of equipment, insurance. There's a lot of things that we're looking at in operation of a company, and so are you guys. However, honor and integrity, you're supposed to be representing the people and the kids that are not standing in here. And you're not doing a very good job of it. And I don't even live in this county. I won't move to this county.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Larry Tasman? Tasman?
Well, I guess you could say I'm the orchestrator to all this, okay? Hi, Mrs. Brown, nice to see you. Dr. Bowden, oh, your son is on the football team this year at Riverview. Just think, Mrs. Johnson called me and said, "Does Mr. Bowden know that his son may go to --"
Excuse me, speak into the mic, please.
-- may go to playoffs this year? Do you know that our drive to Jacksonville last year, we had five minutes of time to make sure that those kids were safe and complied with laws? You didn't care about that. You're not addressing that. You're leaving that to the responsibility. You're endorsing companies coming from Orlando, thinking that Carol LaShawn, oh yeah, she should be buying pencils. Sorry, 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 okay? She should be buying pencils. She shouldn't be putting your students in jeopardy, okay? The last time we had a hearing was when, was it Mrs. Schulz or Schulz was here? She was just graduating college when we had. Okay, so I don't know what it's going to take for me to stir up your recognition that we brought along two companies in this town. You were lucky enough to have two providers, all around and all aboard, to safely transport your kids. We have had not one accident in all our history, okay? So now you're depending on Mrs. LaShawn saying, "Well, I hope it'll work." Oh, yes, you're hoping that that company that comes to bring your kid up to Jacksonville will comply. They'll have to put up a driver here. So you think that costs are going to be respected? The bid has a maximum allowable thing. Well, we have buses that we provide for all the schools for $500, okay? We brought in small-team buses. Call the athletic director at Booker High School and ask him, what is he going to say when it comes to, "Oh my God, now we have to spend $700 on a bus to take our volleyball team to Arcadia?" Okay, it's your decision. Live with it, enjoy it. I'm sorry. My daughter says I should retire. What do you think?
Thank you. John Mc -- McOrd?
Close.
Sorry, close, but no cigar, right?
I'm in trouble with McDonald's, please. That's Mac Award.
Mac Award, okay, thank you.
They're looking for the vowel between the C and the M. It's not there. Is the mic --
It's on.
Can you hear me?
It's on, yes.
My question to the board is, how much longer do we have to be subjected, as citizens, to the headlines regarding the incompetence of our current superintendent? Sarasota seems to be competing with Manatee County in a race to the bottom with negative school authority headlines. The initial controversy which brought me to this podium some time ago, when the contract for the new superintendent was being negotiated and discussed, regarded as credible sexual harassment charges brought by three women in his previous assignment. Two of the women took polygraphs, three of them. Two passed. The second, the third one was inconclusive due to nervousness of the subject. The superintendent was never polygraphed and was hired despite the investigation by the attorneys of not clearing him of the charges. Next, we had the John Russo case at Brookside Middle School, where student phone videos of the incident were erased by the administration, and confidential personal information about John was released to the press. This latter issue was referred to arbitration, and recently, the attorneys for the school district conceded the case before the arbitrators from Tallahassee. Meanwhile, the disciplinary case against John continues with Tallahassee arbitrators. If the district loses, it will cost tens or hundreds of dollars additional in damages. The Malpe case continues this patent, pattern of duplicity on the part of the superintendent. When did Bowden hear of the charges, see the texts and the emails? When did he inform the board? Did he delay any action until his buddy's contract was extended by one year? I asked the board, "Why don't you ask the three women who brought the initial charges? Ask John Russo, the Brookside teacher, and ask the woman who accused Mr. Malpe to take polygraphs paid by the school board. And if they show the subjects to be truthful, insist that Bowden, Malpe, and the Brookside principal be tested as well. If the results show that their answers are not honest, offer to settle the open civil cases to stop the drain on school budgets that these cases might force the board to pay, and move to remove Bowden, Malpe, and the Brookside principal from their positions for moral perpetuity." Thank you.
Thank you. We are now, may I have a motion on, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. After the agenda was made available to the public, the following items were added. Item five, approval of minutes from the July 16th and July 23rd school board meeting. Item number six, the addendum to the instructional classified personnel report. And in addition to new business, item 63 is the July 30th board meeting minutes were added. There were three items that were pulled from the agenda after it was made public. Item number 47, 48, 49, these are transportation agreements with Girls Inc. of Sarasota, Boys and Girls Club, and the Laurel Civic Association.
May I have a motion on this item?
Oh, go quick. Carolyn.
You're supposed to make a motion. And then you discuss it. Okay.
Would you move?
I move that we approve the amended consent agenda.
Is there a second? Thank you. On to discussion, Bridget Ziegler.
Yeah, I move to, I move that we move, pull item number 24, just for comment, as mentioned before. I don't know if that needs a second, but...
No, you don't.
I second it.
There we go.
I don't know that that needs a motion. I think, I think that can just be, if all it is is for comment, you can comment on it either now or after, either.
I was going to call you after that. I remembered.
All right. Okay, so I will wait. Well, ultimately, I just wanted to pull it for comment, and then...
I want to spell comment.
Then we'll go to number four, I'm sorry. It was item number 24, as it pertains to the approval of agreement between ACHIEVE 3000 and the school board of Sarasota County. I know that there had been some emails of concerns. I see Dr. Cantalupo there. I know Dr. Bowden was included, and I have also spoken to our board attorney. And I believe that there's been also some other discussions separate from other board members. But the topic of data gathering in general, and the data world that we live in, can provide great benefit, but I will tell you, I know personally, it's caused me some concern. So there have been some ongoing discussions between myself, and not specific just to this item, but to some other approvals that we've done in the past. As many people know, we are grateful recipients of grant funds, that they tie accountability measurements to that, and therefore, data is collected. Chime in if I'm incorrectly saying this. But that is also something that is similar at the state level. You know, I was really appreciative to hear that while we can't control, in a world of data breaches, and we are the custodians of this information, we have to take that very seriously. And as we go through, despite if it's our fault or not, when we do contract with third-party organizations and there is a breach, we can also hold our, be held accountable. And our job as fiduciaries is to mitigate any of those risks and also protect our students. I know that Dr. Cantalupo and our general counsel have looked through a couple of things. One specific item, and again, I don't want to say that this is with every contract, but utilizing our N number versus our student's social security number. And I just think it's really important, because this has been an ongoing conversation. I know it's on my radar. I know it's definitely something parents are worried about as well. So I did not want that to just go past without addressing it. And it's certainly not just because I brought it up. I think that this is just an ongoing concern, and I just want to make sure that the public is aware that this is definitely not something that's taken lightly in any shape. So that was my comment.
Mr. Robinson?
My comment had to do with the bus drivers, but I guess, since we did...
I had one too.
I know, but so you went right into this, and to this, instead of skipping over, and I have some questions about, especially because they were talking about the safety of our children. So can I?
I asked you, I just, talk.
Okay, okay.
I called on you.
Okay. I'm really concerned of people coming up and giving me something, saying that the safety is an issue, because now I'm put on notice, and I don't want, I mean, safety should be paramount to a secondary to, I hate to say, money, our cancellation fee. I mean, if, I don't know the validity of what they're saying, because someone just, anybody can go open to the public, anybody can say anything, anybody can hand me anything. But, you know, they certainly seemed, they had some certain amount of qualification, level of expertise, this document I was handed. I'm curious, I don't expect you to know, but I'm very curious if these things are true, if the veracity of their claims, do they have any merit?
So I don't have the bid packets in front of me. If we might, why don't I schedule a meeting with Jason Harris, our new director of transportation, and Carol LaShawn, and then I'll have a recommendation for you based on my conversation with them.
Thank you.
Did you receive a copy? Did you receive this?
Yes, I have that. I received that prior to the meeting, so I've got all the concerns listed here.
Okay. Mrs. Brown?
Yes, that's what my concern was too, especially that we didn't have proof that they're complying with the Justified Lunchford Act. Paramount that these drivers need to be run through that, and criminal background checks, and making sure they have the drug and alcohol. So I too want to make sure that if this was not part of the bid, that we go back and look at those who did get it, to look into that, because that concerns me. And I also was, as long as we brought up the data information, I felt very relieved to some degree that we don't share the name, the social security number. We share an N number, that's an internal number that only we have when we're sending out some of this other ones, because I know there was a big deal about the Pearson Group. Our school, our students weren't included in that data breach. But we also have to keep, you know, tight control over what our data says, and to make sure, and I know that Mr. Bingswanger and his department has been watching that closely. But for parents, and when we're sharing data, it's usually through an N number. We don't give the information to these other parties. And we're very, very concerned about keeping that data and identifying information about the students close to our vests.
Mrs. Ziegler?
And I'll just quickly come in on the safety piece. You know, and I wasn't, I wanted to clarify that this is in relation to a previous bid that was brought forward with public comment as well.
Correct.
Okay. And I know as a result of some of the concerns, and I appreciate people coming forward to make us aware, specifically of the 10-year review of how they do, I think it was a pre-bid meeting or discussion, but that there, if I recall correctly, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that there was some feedback taken, and then some changes made as far as for upcoming ones for process. But I would agree with Dr., Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Brown, as far as the safety precautions, to just certainly make sure that we are checking that box. That should be a baseline, and then we have the cancellation if that's the other issue. So when we ever, we can get clarification, so appreciate that.
All those in favor of the motion, please vote. If you're not in favor, vote two. Vote against it.
Voting on the motion.
Voting on the motion, yes.
You've got...
As...
Madam Chair, you've got Mrs. Goodwin on the phone, so I don't know if you need to do it by voice.
I will. I was going to ask her.
So roll call.
I voted electronically from home.
She voted electronically.
Oh, well, look, it works when someone...
Wait, wait, way ahead of me.
There's two up there, there's three up there.
That's funny.
I voted.
That's funny.
There you go. There's all up there.
It was hot.
It was hot. And the motion passes 5-0. Right now, we are under new business, and item number 63. Do I have a motion?
I move that the July 30th, the minutes on the July 30th public hearing to adopt tentative mileage budget meeting minutes be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Robinson?
My concern has to do with what happened at the meeting last time, and the minutes just simply reflect that we had a discussion of the First Amendment. My fear is that Mr. Wise decides to sue us because his, you know, we violated his civil rights, we didn't allow him to public comment, for whatever reason. And I want the minutes to reflect that, at least, I don't know if Ms. Ziegler wants to, I want the minutes to reflect that I didn't support the gaveling down of Mr. Wise. So if Mr. Wise ends up suing people, he doesn't sue me. So, I mean, I have a lot, I don't want somebody suing me, and so I don't believe I did anything that would require anybody to sue me.
I don't hear anybody going to sue anything about them last.
Well, I don't know what Mr. Wise is going to do, so I'm asking the minutes to reflect that I didn't support the gaveling down.
The minute, this is Jane Goodwin, Eric. The minutes do not reflect other discussion other than the board approving things. There's always the backup of the actual recording of the meeting that someone can see something from. I said stop, but I didn't stop him. He was allowed to speak. So there was nothing that was done at that time to reflect that I was stopping his free speech, other than I was hoping he wasn't going down a rabbit hole.
But then, Ms. Goodwin...
I really think that, I really feel that, you know, this is something that need not be done, but I take note of your right to do that, so thank you very much.
But then, Mrs. Goodwin, Mr. Loback came and spoke, and Mr. Loback said derogatory comments about me and Ms. Ziegler. You didn't gavel him down, nor would I want you to gavel him down. And then Mr. Loback sat in the audience and spoke from the audience, and you didn't gavel Mr. Loback down. So it gives the appearance that you were gaveling people down based upon the content of their speech, not based upon the civility of the speech. And all I'm asking is that my not approval of those actions be related in the minutes. I don't know why anybody in the board would not, would not support me saying, this was a very extraordinary action that you decided to do at the board meeting. And it was an extraordinary event that occurred. And all I'm asking is that it be noted in the minutes that I didn't support that action, so in case this ends up being in some sort of litigation, that there is a record that I didn't support it. That's all I'm asking. I don't see how that costs anybody any problems. I don't see how that would cost anybody any consternation, because I don't, you did things as the board chair and speaks for the board, that put the entire board at a liability. And I'm simply asking for carve-out of those people who did not support those actions. I don't see how that's a problem.
Dr. Bowden?
At this point in time, you have a motion in front of you to accept the minutes as presented. I believe it would be appropriate for Mr. Robinson to make a motion to amend the minutes. If that were to gain a second, you would have to vote on that amendment prior to approving the minutes.
I make a motion that we denote in the minutes that Ms. Ziegler and myself did not support the actions of gaveling down Mr. Wise.
Second.
Mrs. Brown, is this on topic or?
It's on topic.
Okay, go ahead.
As, you know, we explained earlier, comments aren't normally put in the minutes. I think there were some comments that were added this time. And when we are given the minutes from our staff, basically, they're draft minutes. And we can ask changes be made to the draft minutes. You don't have to pull them, you know, as I did, when there was some misinformation that was printed in the minutes. I think it was on Jane being made president versus president-elect of the FSBA. There was a factual error. I had that corrected. And that can be done before the minutes are posted. If you wanted to add language to the minutes that weren't there, you could have asked for that change to be made. But I don't think there was ever a time when we had during that meeting that there ever was an approval or disapproval vote on the gavel incident from anyone. And again, that's something that you go back to the record of the minutes to see, but that normally wouldn't even, and not the record of the minutes, the record of the meeting. You listen to what was said in the meeting. But, I mean, Carolyn and I didn't cheer it on either. We, I mean, it wasn't something that, you know, we override what the chair was doing. There was no motion to override what the chair was doing. But if you have, and then if you want to make an amendment, I would like to see a written amendment that you're going to... you're going to be offering. But it seems like we're, again, majoring in the minors, making a big issue out of something there isn't anybody trying to sue us. You made your statement that you didn't agree with it. I don't know why we need to continue pulling the minutes and bisecting the minutes every time. If there's a factual error that needs to be corrected, we can correct them. But we don't normally add comments to the minutes. But, you know, if you feel so pressed that you have to say that, when there really was no vote taken, I just wish you would understand more about the process and the procedure, and would try to understand what it is we're trying to tell you about the process and procedure of the minutes and the approval process, and when something is put on the agenda. But as far as I know, there was no vote taken on whether or not we agreed with the action of the chair that day.
This is like picking wings off of a fly. This is how minute we're getting. It's absolutely... Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. There's a process junkie on here, or a policy person, I think I would take that hat where it with pride. But if I read the current minutes as they state, and it says, "Discussion ensued regarding impact fees and the freedom of speech of citizens during the hearing of citizens" portion of a board meeting. And yes, while I believe there, if I go back to my certain time, that I wanted to add something to the minutes, and it was my personal opinion that it was, it rose to the level of significance. And I believe during the hearing of citizens last time, there was in fact a interruption. I know I made point of order, although then it continued on. I know Mr. Robinson mentioned his concern. I certainly shared my concern. I know it's been a conversation now in the community. I am not suggesting that other board members also supported it or did not. But I do think adding the objection of that notion is, quite frankly, not... It shouldn't... If it's important, and I believe it does rise to a significant topic, we can merely vote on it, move on, and not spend more time. I mean, that's how I would say let's find a compromise.
Mr. Harvey? I mean, Mr. Harvey, Mr. Harvey.
Well, the minutes need to reflect, need to reflect motions and actions taken. The board can certainly... That's the kind of the minimum standard that must be, that you must do. If you want to add more, the board can add more. It's not required to add more. That's your discretion.
I would prefer not to add more, because we're not required to do it. And if anybody has a question, they could go online. This is all archived. You can get a disc or video, and it's all archived. I mean, everything we say, so that perfectly would cover you for anything, because it's archived. So you could go and pull a file and say, here, here's proof I didn't vote for that. I mean, go ahead. Eric, Mr. Robinson?
I'm...
No, you're on to him. Gotcha.
The issue is, is that we are talking about people's constitutional rights. People's constitutional rights are not pulling flies off, wings off butterflies. And to equate people's right of redress of the government minimizes that right. To say that putting in that somebody becomes president of a elected organization should be in there, and somebody's right of free speech gets minimized, that that is, that's acceptable, putting... We didn't vote on someone being president of a school, of FSBA. Okay, that was not an action. That wasn't a vote. But somehow or another, that rises to the level of something that should be put in the minutes. This has to do with somebody's rights being taken away. And Ms. Brown, you at that meeting made comments that led to believe that you supported that action by commenting about it's not right that people shouldn't bring their concerns to the open to the public. They can bring... Mr. Wise can come up and say whatever he wants at the, pretty much, whatever he wants to the open to the public. He is free to recite the Constitution if he wanted to. He has that right to do that. And so to minimize this, to say this is a minor thing, this is majoring in the minors, that's my entire point. My entire point is that we are minimizing people's rights, that we are somehow that are subjugating the citizens' right to redress their government in a minimal way. This is not pulling wings off a butterfly. The right to redress your government is a very fundamental right of the citizens of America. So is their right of free speech. That is a fundamental bedrock of our Constitution. And to minimize those rights that those people have is missing the entire point. I mean, this is a...
Madam Chair?
These are pretty big issues. And this was an extraordinary event. This wasn't...
I hear you.
This was not a normal event that occurred. And I'm simply asking, and I know it doesn't cost you guys anything. It doesn't put you out one iota to allow me...
No more cards.
Well, he...
Actually, we have a...
There's a motion on the floor. No cards.
I just want to say, I'm going to bring my flag out and wave it too. And I'll say, if it's so important, you want that in there, you know, God bless America, let's add that in. But I also then will be asking to add in comments under the comments that were made inaccurately during the public comment today, that we're saying that there was three polygraphs taken, he was found guilty in this. I'm going to reserve the right to make those corrections to the statements that were made also. So let's go for it. I don't want to argue about this anymore. I just hope it doesn't become a regular event.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, I would just like to say one thing. He was allowed to speak, Eric. I didn't stop him from speaking. I thought he had said the word sexual. That was my concern, was that we were going down a rabbit hole. I had heard him speak at three meetings. Do you remember that we had a student who sat on our board next to Dr. Bowden, who was so upset about a hearing of citizens last spring, that she had to collect herself in the back room and remove herself from our board meeting because she felt attacked by one of the citizens who was speaking? That's why we have now moved our citizen station to the other side of Mr. Hardy. So if I'm more sensitive to that, please forgive me. From now on, I have thought maybe we need two hearing of citizens. A hearing of citizens on business at the regular time, and then another hearing of citizens at the end of the meeting where they can say anything. Hernando is doing that, Pasco is doing that, Hillsborough is doing that. Do we need to do that? Maybe we should think about having two separate hearings of citizens. But far be it for me, although you all have cast me in the public over the last couple of weeks on Facebook, along with the teachers' union, of being against public free speech, which I am not. So I'm willing to let anyone say anything that they want to at the next school board meeting. But don't recast me as being a villain and not allowing people to speak, because that's not my intention, or never would be my intention.
Please vote.
What is the wording that is we're voting on?
I think Mr. Hardy wants to speak first.
No, I was just going to say you're voting first on the motion to amend the motion.
Yes.
I want to know what it says.
Amendment.
The rest of us did, but, okay.
No, hold on. If she... Well, if she wants to make it, add it, I'll add her.
Okay. If we don't stop, I'm going to recess the board.
So you've got before you, the motion is to amend the motion to approve the minute. So you're voting now on the amendment offered by Mr. Robinson?
Do we have to allow public comment?
No.
No, this is part of the issue.
All those in favor of the amendment by Mr. Robinson, say yes.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
See?
And now you have before you the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Oh, we can vote. Okay.
Okay.
We can vote online for that now?
Vote on it.
Nope.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's up.
You can't...
Okay.
You're voting to approve the minutes as amended?
Yes. And the vote is 5 to 0. It passes.
Yay!
That ends the board meeting for tonight. The next monthly work session is Tuesday, August 20. And the next monthly board meeting is Tuesday, August 20 at 3:00 p.m.
Comments?
The next workshop is Tuesday, August 20 at 10:00 probably. And then the meeting is at 3:00.
Public loud and clear.
Not to speak. We are adjourned.
No, we didn't have comments.
Mrs. Brown?
I just want to remind, our teachers are back to school this week and getting their classrooms set up. And we were at an event last week that welcomed back some of the teachers, that there was all excitement. And we heard from the, our Teacher of the Year, Shane Swayze, who was from Oak Park. And he talked about how he reached out to these kids. But basically, it was a very positive way of getting our teachers back together before that training session they had. And our students will be coming back this coming Monday. If any parents out there have not signed up their kids yet, because I know, I think I was at Philippi earlier, and they had a whole bunch of new students signing up just this past week. So if you haven't already signed up with your intention of where you're going to school yet, please do. And I know there's going to be excitement at the bus transportation. They're going to be sending out those bus drivers between 6:00 and 6:15. We're going to be rah rah at the stations for them. And I know there's going to be some activities at all the schools. And the principals, that we've been working all summer, and basically all last year, about having positive team working, that we can get great teams working at all of our schools, working together to get our kids successful next year. And I'm just so excited about the New Year starting. And I know my grandkids are too, and over there helping my daughter get her classroom set up. But school starts on Monday.
Mrs. Ziegler?
I was kind of going to say the same thing. Well, first, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Dumas and the facilities team, because summer is when you guys work, your rear ends off to be ready for the biggest are loading. And wishing everyone a good luck for this incoming school year. And this will be my first year as my daughter attending as a kindergartner. So I am joining in the anxiety and excitement of many, many parents in Sarasota County. So looking forward to it.
I'd like to thank staff, because I know that I've sent out a couple of emails this weekend, thinking that you would get back to me on Monday, and you got back to me over the weekend. So that shows your true dedication to this community and this school system. Thank you very much, both of you, for doing that. I appreciate it.
So I'd have to thank about four people.
Where's your...
So we're good for September 21st?
September 21st, 3:30.
3:30.
Bridgette, where's she going to be going?
Fruitvale.
Fruitvale, great.
I thought she was going to Bay Harbor.